Hey everyone, welcome to Radio Simi. I'm your host, Lea Ewing.
And I'm your guest co-host, Adam Fusage.
This week, we'll be interviewing my friend and school board trustee, Sophia Bagdasarian.
We'll also be going over the latest news and some more Simi Valley updates.
Here's some updates about what's going on in Simi Valley and the greater area. Southern California Edison, the company responsible for the power shut offs in Simi Valley, is hosting a community meeting on their wildlife safety efforts, which includes the power shut offs. The meeting is for Simi Valley and more park residents on Tuesday, March 23rd from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. You can register at bit.ly/scesvmp. The Simi Valley Public Library is now open with some COVID-19 safety modifications. Only 25 people are allowed inside at one time. The restrooms are still closed and you can only visit for 30 minutes at a time. It's open from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., so if you like to read, make sure you check it out. The Rancho Simi Parks and Rec District is hosting an egg scramble this year. The egg decorating contest is from March 28th through Easter on April 4th. From March 21st to April 4th, again, still Easter, there is a hopping bunny hunt where you visit every park and look for material bunnies. There are multiple winners and every winner receives a gift basket. For more information, go to the Rancho Parks and Rec District website at rsrpd.org. Our congressional representative, Mike Garcia, is having a virtual town hall on March 23rd from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. You can call in at 833-305-1686. There is a virtual event called "Education in the Pandemic" on April 7th at 6:30 p.m. where many school board members across Ventura County will be in attendance. The Greater Oxnard Organization of Democrats is hosting another virtual event, this time with UFW, which stands for the United Farm Workers, on March 24th at 7:00 p.m. to talk about COVID-19's effect on the Latino community. To learn more about the event, you can find it on their website at greateroxnarddemocrats.com/calender. This week, a white man walked into Big Five and started yelling the F-word and the F-word before he was kicked out and arrested. The man and the woman recording admitted in the video that they don't live in Simi Valley. It was later reported that they are YouTubers who get paid to do similar stuff. The CDC has relaxed its social distancing guidelines from six feet to three feet in schools. It is still unclear if this will impact SVUSD's decisions.
Here are some more job opportunities in Simi Valley. Chipotle is looking for full-time employees. They offer a wide variety of benefits, including tuition assistance and free food. Wendy's is looking for a full-time crew member, which is a perfect entry-level job for high schooler students 16 years and older. Sprouts is seeking a part-time courtesy clerk.
Here are your COVID-19 updates. There are 62 new cases in Ventura County as of March 19th, with 82% of the ventilators available and 29.3% of adult ICU beds are available throughout the county. There have also been 306, 749 doses administered. Of those, 212, 585 were first doses, one of which was mine, and 94,164 were second doses. As of March 17th, Ventura County has transitioned into the red tier. This means that indoor dining, museums, zoos, and aquariums can operate at 25% capacity. Retail and malls are now open at 50% capacity and indoor gyms are open at 10% capacity. Up next, we'll be joined with Adam Fusage to talk about local science.
Well, hello and welcome back to your, you know, obviously favorite part of the Radio Simi podcast every week, the science segment with me, Adam Fusage. So last week, we talked about water and how the lack of water is very much causing a lot of problems in California and, you know, making it a lot easier for us to catch on fire. Well, in this week, we're gonna talk about something a layer deeper than that and talk about the causes of why we have so little water. Because although we're getting a lot less water down from the mountains and from the rivers, we are still getting a lot of water. But one of the major problems with that that we're going to discuss is that there are now more people who need water and a lot of that water that we do get, which is going down, is now going to farms. So let's get on that first point. Cities in California are growing at a very large rate. In Los Angeles County alone, which is the largest county in the state, as well as the nation, it has a population of 10 million people that has very much grown. The 2020 census shows us that that county increased by 3.32% in five years, which is an insane amount of growth over such a small amount of time. And that's not just in LA. In fact, another, a number of other Californian counties are also very big and still growing. San Diego County has a population of 3 million and a growth rate of 7.8%, while neighboring Orange County has 3.1 million residents and a growth rate of 6%, which is putting a strain on the water. We have a lot of water that we've been using to drink and to shower and to bathe and all of the stuff that we like to do with our water. But considering the amount of people that we're gaining and the amount of people that are now in cities, it's putting a lot of strain on these few pipes. So instead of spreading the amount of people who need water across all of California, which would make it a lot easier because you could divvy it up, you're now having very few pipes leading to places like San Diego, Orange County, and LA County, as well as Ventura County, which Simi is in, that are needing more and more water to go through them, leaving a lot less for other pipes that would go to forests like Yosemite and Sequoia National Parks or up there in Lake Tahoe, for example. All of those places are now getting less and less water and those rural communities as well because more people are living in these big cities. But that's not the entire problem. See, another big drainage of that water that we're getting is going to the farms. In fact, in 2018 alone, farms and agriculture in general in California used about 80% of all of the freshwater we have. But it's not like we can just turn them off and bring it back up to us because California farms are an important part of everything that we do. In fact, a third of the United States' vegetables and two-thirds of the United States' fruits and nuts are grown right here in California, which is an insane amount of food coming out of one spot. Farms in California is a $42.6 billion industry that gives at least $100 billion in economic activity, meaning spending around it. Spending for food and as well as for other things related to that food, which means it's generating a lot of money for California. The amount of money, the amount of sales in agriculture in California first succeeded $30 billion in 2004, so it has been big for a while. The state's agricultural sales first went over $30 billion in 2004, which means it's been big for a while. And that makes it twice as big as any other state's agriculture industry, meaning we have more money in farming and making food than any state in the union. We have twice as many as that. It's crazy. In fact, we produced about 13% of all the money made in agriculture in the entire United States in 2017. And we produced $20 billion more than the second highest state. So agriculture is obviously very, very important to a lot of the Latino communities in California, as well as the economy of the United States as a whole. We make a lot of money and get a lot of benefit out of this. So it's a very complicated issue considering we can't just shut the water off to the farms to bring it back to us. We've really got to get more water out of there by dialing down the amount of climate change that's causing these rises in temperatures in the mountains, as talked about last episode. So that's a very important cause to talk about, considering everything. But why do the forests need water in the first place? Because if, yes, we're running out of water and yes, a lot of it is going to places other than people who need it and to forests and stuff, but why do they need it in the first place when they were made for stuff like this? Well, that's what we're gonna talk about on next episode and what the United States Forest Service is doing to help or not doing to help stop fires in California. But until next time, I've been your host of this science segment, whatever it's called, Adam Fusage, and I will see you guys next episode. Bye-bye.
The acronym AAPI has been thrown around a lot recently, especially after the sad passing of six Asian women in a hate crime that took place in Atlanta, Georgia. AAPI stands for Asian American and Pacific Islanders. Although this hate crime took place in Atlanta, hate crimes and racism against the Asian community exist everywhere, including Simi Valley. Here are three ways you can help our local Asian community. First and foremost, support Asian businesses. Asian businesses have come under attack after the hit of COVID-19. This is due to many factors, but one of which is Donald Trump's racist rhetoric, such as calling it the Chinese virus. You should shop and support local Asian businesses as much as you possibly can to help offset the negative effects of these stereotypes and other forms of racism. The second thing you can do is stand against hate and discrimination. This is a popular hashtag that is used to show that people and companies hashtag "Stand Against Hate" of marginalized groups. To show that you stand against hate, speak out when other people say, do, or share anti-Asian and racist actions or words. Protect your Asian friends and family from discrimination by preventing it from happening. This is also a good time to look into yourself and your own actions to see where your biases might lie. Many people use racist microaggressions all the time and aren't even aware of it. By checking yourself, you help contribute to a larger culture of support and safety. The third thing you can do is contact the city council and the city manager. With enough public pressure, the city council and the city manager may release a public statement or even better, they might pass a resolution condemning the attacks on the Asian community and offer words of support. Racist rhetoric worsened the hate crimes against Asian people in 2020 and 2021. And positive rhetoric accompanied by action can certainly help. You can email city council@publicstatements@simivalley.org to submit a written comment on Monday's meeting. If you would like to speak instead of email, you can send an email to zoompublicstatements@simivalley.org to confirm your time to speak on Agenda Item 5, no later than 3:30 p.m. on Monday. The city manager has traditionally been more responsive than city council. You can email our city manager, Brian Gabler, at citymgr@simivalley.org. The Simi Valley Public Library just recently announced that they have put together a selection of AAPI books. Remember, AAPI stands for Asian American and Pacific Islanders. You can find more information on their website, simivalleylibrary.org. If you're interested in supporting people with disabilities, you can send an email to California lawmakers asking them to prioritize people with developmental disabilities through COVID-19 and more. You can find full information about the campaign as well as take action at p2a.co/capitalx0 lowercase l l b n. Next, we'll be interviewing the school board member, Sophia Bagdasarian. Okay, next, we're gonna be joined with Sophia Bagdasarian, a current school board member. Thank you so much for joining us today, Sophia. Would you mind telling us a little bit about yourself?
Thank you, Lea, for having me. My name is Sophia Bagdasarian. And just by way of background, I was born in Armenia. My parents brought me and my brother to America when I was four. It's sort of the typical American dream story where, you know, living in Soviet Armenia, they wanted a better life for their children. So they really valued education for both of us and stressed the importance of going to college. So for me, you know, wanting to become a psychologist, I always knew that I wanted to go into the helping profession. So I went to UC San Diego for my undergraduate and I majored in psychology. And as I said, I wanted to become a psychologist. So for graduate school, I applied to UCLA in their social work program. It was a combined master's and PhD program. But when I got there, I sort of caught the policy bug. I knew at that point that I really did not want to become a therapist, that what my, or where my calling was, was more in public service. I wanted to give back in a, in a larger capacity. So I sort of switched my area of focus from what we call the micro area, the more clinical area of social welfare, to the more macro or policy area. So I graduated with my PhD in social welfare policy. And I worked for a couple of years at a postdoc, what do we call a postdoc? And then I got a tenure track position at Cal State Los Angeles, where I currently teach social work. I've been there for about 15 years now. My area of focus is public child welfare. And I've spent the last 20 years or so mostly working on policy level change at the federal and local level. We moved to Simi Valley about 11 years ago when I was nine months pregnant with my second daughter. So, you know, it was sort of the typical story. We were looking for an area that had a good school district, that was affordable for a young couple. That was a nice area and of course, Simi Valley fit the bill. And we are so happy we made that decision. And so now my daughter is, my youngest is 11, my oldest is 13, and both my girls attend Sinaloa Middle School currently. I volunteered in their classrooms and I've really enjoyed doing that, getting to know the teachers. They've just, you know, they've had a wonderful experience overall in the school system. And now that they're older, I decided I wanted to give back to the community in a different way. And, you know, and I also realized the importance of getting involved in my local community as well, not just, you know, trying to make state and federal level change. So that's why I decided last year to run for school board. And so I ran and I, I won. And, and oh, I should also mention that I serve on Neighborhood, Neighborhood Council 4 as well. So yeah, so and here I am.
Last year was the first time you ever ran for office. What was it like?
It was really exciting. I mean, I was nervous, of course. I had never run for office, as you said. And, you know, I, I, I knew a little bit about the process and it, it was a lot of fun also, to be honest, because I got to meet a lot of really amazing people. I got to meet you as my campaign manager. I met other folks who were running, who were wonderful, who've become now lifelong friends, I believe. And, you know, I, I really feel like we ran a great campaign. The other two candidates also ran great campaigns. We were all very cordial. And, you know, so I think it, it went really well.
You've been on the school board for a few months now. How has it been?
It's been great. Everybody's been very welcoming. I already feel like I'm part of the team and it's been a really easy process for me. I've learned a lot already. I immediately went to a training provided by the California School Board Association and that was super helpful to just sort of dive right in into what all goes on when it comes to being a school board trustee. But then also, Dr. Poplinsky was wonderful in providing me training as well. And all the school board members and all the staff have just, just been really wonderful. It's been a great experience so far.
Now that you're an elected official, what are your top three priorities of things that you plan to get done in your term?
You know, my top three priorities haven't changed from the time when I was running. They include safety, which I think the school board has done a really great job so far. As we report every day in terms of COVID cases, we have not had a single case of COVID that's been contracted on campus. You know, I have to say, I was a little bit wary of schools opening because, you know, as a parent, we, we're all concerned. And not just as parents, I mean, as a community, we're all concerned for, for our children. But the safety precautions that the schools have been taken, have taken into account and, you know, and I've visited some of the schools and I've seen those precautions with my own eyes. And they're really, really good. And so, you know, that, that was one of my priorities and it still is. My second priority was mental health, the mental health of our students. Last night at the school board meeting, I brought up wanting to put on the agenda for the next meeting, talking about adding more school, more mental health counselors, particularly a school social worker. And so that will go on the agenda for, for next month. So that's, that still remains a priority for me. And another priority is college and career readiness. And in particular, you know, the opportunity gap that we see along socioeconomic lines. So that's not something that I have tackled yet in my first couple of months here. But it's definitely something that's on my radar to, to look into in the, in the future.
This question is from one of our patrons, Catherine Capella. She was wondering, does the school board have any plans on bringing back home economics and shop classes? She believes that these are important life skills that not everyone learns at home.
This is a really good question. I'm not aware of the school board, you know, considering this, but that doesn't mean that this wasn't something that was talked about prior to, to me coming on board. I do think that these are important life skills. I know that some of our high schools do have classes that may not be called home economics or shop, but that teach, you know, carpentry and, and things of that nature. But I don't believe that they are required like they were, you know, like when I had to take home economics, it was a required class back in high school. I personally do believe that some form of home economics, perhaps not the version that I was taught, is important in terms of teaching how to balance a budget and other sort of life skills of, of that nature should be so required in some form. I believe financial capability and asset building, I mentioned this when I was running, are important life skills. So these do need to be taught in some form, whether it's integrated within an existing class is something to also consider. But this is definitely an important question. Thank you.
What are the best ways people, and particularly the youth, can get involved in local school decisions?
This is a really excellent question because I think getting involved in any local government governance is, is really important. Civic engagement is so important. And in fact, just yesterday, just last night, the school board passed a resolution toward this end. So in terms of youth in particular, but the public in general, one way you can get involved is to look at the agenda ahead of time for any school board meeting and see if there's anything on there that you in particular want to make a comment on. Because anything that, that the school board will be making a decision on, you can make a public comment about. So you can send in a public comment. Another way to, to get involved is you can always email or contact the school board trustees and let them know what you think about anything that's on the agenda for a school board meeting. Or anything in general, any issues or concerns that you have about anything going on in the school district. You can also contact the superintendent as well. Other ways that youth can get involved is if you get involved in your, your school leadership because youth leadership also has contact with school district leadership. So that's another way that you can, you can get involved. But I'm so glad that this question was asked because civic engagement is so very important to the life of any community. So if you do want to get involved, please visit the school board website, which has information and links to every meeting that is, that has happened and every upcoming meeting for school board meetings. So in fact, you can go back and look at all videos of school board meetings that have taken place in the past to familiarize yourself with, you know, decisions that have already been made. And then for every upcoming meeting, you can look at the agenda. So all those links are available on the school board website.
Okay, so that's, that's all the time we have today. Thank you so much for coming on our show. I really appreciate it.
Well, thank you so much for having me. This was a lot of fun. Have a great day.
Thank you. You too. Okay, bye. This week, we'll be joined with Simi Valley-based four-piece indie rock band Liquid Indigo. They formed in 2018 and have spent the last three years writing and performing music inspired by some of their musical influencers like Queen, David Bowie, Pink Floyd, Paramore, Rage Against the Machine, and Elton John. They have two songs currently out on all streaming platforms such as Spotify and Amazon Music, one of which is a cover of Blondie's Heart of Glass and another called Rose-Tinted Daydreams, which is what you'll be hearing shortly. This song is a single off of their upcoming full-length album that will be released in the coming months. If you enjoy the song, be sure to follow them on Instagram at @liquid-indigo-band and follow them on whatever streaming services you use in order to stay up to date on any information about them. in order to stay up to date on any information about them.
That was the song Rose-Tinted Daydreams by Liquid Indigo. If you enjoyed their song, be sure to follow them on Instagram at @liquid underscore indigo underscore band, and follow them on whatever streaming services you use.
Thank you so much for listening to episode 12 of Radio Simi.
Follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram at Radio Simi.
Remember, if you want us to play your song, share your story, or feature your graphic art, reach out to us at tani.cc/radiosimiform.
If you can, please leave us a review on Apple Podcasts and subscribe to our YouTube channel.
Don't forget, we're looking for people to join our team. So if you want to help and get to know your community better, fill out the application of interest at tani.cc/joinradiosimi. Thank you, and tune in next week.